Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to start with our caucuses. You may be aware, there's still some confusion in the public. The city council meetings are actually broken up into two parts. The first is what we call our caucus, and that gives us an opportunity as a council to review the individual items on the agenda and have an open discussion, voice objections, support, questions, any changing of language, whatever the case may be, before the regular meeting, so that when we have the regular meeting, it's easier to transport ourselves through the agenda. So that we can begin, as if we rise and say the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into which stands one nation under universal liberty and justice. Thank you, please proceed. The approval of the minutes and department reports are administrative, we'll move right on. There's been a request for a waiver of the rules. Mayor, I follow requests that there be the approval of the inter municipal agreement between the county of Erie and city of Lackawanna regarding reimbursement for the COVID-19 expenses under the CARES Act. Do any of the council members have any comments on that issue?
No.
No.
Nope. All right, moving to number four, Councilman Ingram. For a ward councilman, anything you want to address on your letter?
Yes, I was going to ask the Director of Development, I know we talked about when people are getting projects, and are we doing where they can give them enough timeline and when they can complete, when they're not going to finish?
I think the question is, it comes down to how long is a building permit good for? That answer is one year. If they're building continuously, I mean, that answer is one year, a building permit is good for one year.
So if when they stop after one year, they haven't done anything, then we can do something about it? Paying for what I was talking about, the gas station had stopped before the COVID.
Yeah, it stopped, well, yeah, it stopped, and it started, and we have not had a continuous period of one year where they have not been working. I had inspectors go out there more frequently recently, and they've seen fairly constant activity over the past two weeks, and they had previously had one complaint about work actually being done, and the interior being demolished and debris being put outside, so they responded then. So we did not have an abandoned project, we did have a stalled project, and it seems to be going now, but their permit is still good.
All right, thank you. My other question is for the city attorney. Update on the storm 161 Stillawana?
Yeah, I still haven't picked a date on that yet.
Okay.
I will pick a date, though. I did check on it, from what I understand, there's only been one complaint in the last two months, and I don't know what the resolution of that was, but it seemed to be a minor complaint. I drove by there also with the Director of Development, and everything appeared to be in order, we revisited premises.
Just to get your update, we have some of the residents that live here that have been dealing with that situation, too. They also had, they also, on their own, called the health department because of some problems about how bad it was, and with the rats and stuff, whatever. Some of the members were here for that, and I guess the health department did find them or whatever, but also it was said that they're getting new ownership. I checked, they don't have a new owner, so.
As far as I know, the property's still in the name of the person who purchased it in 2017.
All right. My other question, what about the update concerning the ladder 149, 163 angle?
Do you know the pending litigation, so really shouldn't discuss that much during an executive session, but if you have any questions during the week, I'll be happy to go over them.
I'd like to go in, okay. On the parking of Stillawana, I had got received, I went and talked to three individuals, one from Divergify Recycling Services, Quick Crate, a Mr. Ken White Plan Manager, SCT, John R. Anderson, President. He sent the letter to all the council about the parking situation and the dangerous situation they are dealing with, the traffic, when their truck coming out.
Is that the north side of Stillawana?
Yeah.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
Yeah.
So I spoke today with our Director of Public Safety, and he drove down there. Feeling is with the bike path now that's come through there, that he hopes that that will help alleviate some of the problem. We do have our patrol officers regularly checking that area, but it should be an issue now, can't really park up on that sidewalk because the bike path is blocking it, and those barriers are there, as well as when you make that turn, so it may create other problems for the truckers, but we'll have to deal with that if they complain about the way it's set up there. But we are watching the area, at least that's what I've been told.
Well, they are, and I've been at the, like I watched the other day, we, police officers were called the other day because people were, one of the delivery trucks, I guess he just parked right in front, and they made a move or whatever, but also the drivers, the owners, we're talking about people parking in the area where they're not supposed to, and making a trouble, and I thought some of them was going to be here today, because they wanted to speak, and they wanted to talk about it, so they don't, but, but, you answered all my questions.
Have you seen it now?
Yeah, I check it every day. Some is good, some people aren't doing it, some people are not.
I told you, our public safety, you know, that area is regularly patrolled for traffic purposes, you know, Ridge Road and the Bridge, and so I told them to keep an eye on it. You know, quite honestly, the tenants in the northern end of Stillawana aren't the cleanest companies up there, and they've created their own problems, but it is a narrow area, and if it persists, we're going to have to figure out another access route for them or something, because it's hard to get cement trucks and things in there, especially now with the bike path, so we'll have to keep an eye on it.
All right.
Just on that note, Rick, I was there the other day after the bike path had been installed, and I was facing south on North Stillawana. There was a car in front of me looking to make either a left or right-hand turn onto Ridge Road, so there was a truck traveling west trying to turn onto the north side, the north Stillawana, and couldn't make that turn with the bike path designed the way it is. The car in front of me had to move over.
To let him in?
To allow that truck, so that's going to be an ongoing problem, unless there's an alternative route.
Well, there's one, there's one other alternative, which is the aprons on Stillawana Commerce in Route 5, as you're turning onto Ridge Road or off of Ridge Road, are a little too tight. So I think we're going to see some modification on that, extending the quotes, the danger zone or the conflict zone is marked in green, extending the green and pulling back the pylons to give them more room to make a 45-degree type turn, so they don't have to go as far wide and out, if that makes sense. I know it's visual.
I get you.
Okay, so I think we had three conflict zones, and then we're going to make another modification for fire, I think. I talked to Chief Fino as well, so I think we got like a punch list we've been working on, that's on there.
Okay, very good, thank you. Anyone else have any comments on item number four? Moving on to item number five, Councilman Ingram, you're.
Yeah, I have some questions regarding communication that the mayor has sent out, but speaking with the mayor, we've talked about it's been handled, I'm satisfied with the.
Are you withdrawing the communication?
Yeah, I'm withdrawing the communication.
Okay, thank you. That communication is withdrawn. Item number six from city attorney, relative to setting a public hearing date for the Energy Improvement Corporation agreement with the, in pursuit to municipal home rule law, section 2744. Any comments on that issue? Rick, I have a question reading that agreement, does that put an additional burden on the treasurer's office?
No.
Not at all? And Rich can answer these questions.
Yeah, it's a funding, what it is, is a funding mechanism for a third, NYSERDA created a corporate, not-for-profit corporation to facilitate portions of funding of buildings that have a clean energy component, so a stack of money that goes to development projects, so it's another funding source. The mechanism we're creating is an ability for somebody to place a public lien on a property through local law. We are defended and indemnified, and we don't pay the cost of that.
In going to that issue of a lien, does that require that the banks be subservient to the new lien of the original, taking a lesser position?
There is stack, there is, there is, actually, there is stacking, as far as that and subordination, the exact order of it, I think's got to be negotiated on the deal.
And so it has to be negotiated on each deal?
Yeah, the stack, the stack, because they're going to use funding sources for the money, the pass-through, which is the NYSERDA not-for-profit, ourselves, for the placement of the lien, but there's always going to be a list of who's first.
And is there a track record for this entity doing these kinds of things? It's difficult to appreciate a bank taking a subservient, a subordinate role on a mortgage.
Well, in some cases, the bank will be the ultimate funding agency, so as far as the list of the liens on that, there is a series of examples, but I did not bring them with me around the state. I think it was, I forgot how old it is, it's a couple-year-old program, but I'm not, I had examples, but I didn't review them before tonight.
Okay, thank you, though. Anyone else have any?
I was asking earlier about the, kind of the same thing, but the public leave the net, the taxes, where are they paid first before the?
Yeah, we're not, we're not supporting, we're not subordinating our taxes, yeah, that's, that's not it. It's this particular lien is a second, is another lien that we can put on property, like a public improvement lien.
All right, thank you. There's no lot of pocket money from the city.
No, that's not, that's not part of the deal.
Moving on to the next item, seven, Director of Recreation. Brian, you want to be heard on that?
Oh, yeah, it's just the DPW's annual toy drive that they do at Christmas time, it's one of the great events that they put on yearly. What they're proposing is to have a chicken barbecue fundraiser, and it's going to be a drive-through event, it'll be perfectly safe as far as COVID guidelines are concerned, and it'll really help give them a jumpstart to bring the toy drive to a new level, so we just wanted to get permission to utilize the Knights Columbus parking lot to facilitate the toy drive, the barbecue.
Thank you, Director. Just wanted to talk about item number eight also.
Item number eight, it's a, an agreement, a lease agreement between the city and the varsity gay kickball league. They ran a kickball league last year during the fall. We've got an open, available field with lighting, which is what they're looking for, kind of one of the only games in town as far as that's concerned, so it's kind of a standard agreement that we used last year, and with absolutely no problems.
All the insurances are in order?
All the insurances in order for all of these events.
Thank you, Director. Anybody have any questions?
No, item number seven, I did speak to Mr. Reese, who is in the forensics, the toy drive. The director, it's a perfect location for this park, because it has ingress and egress. If you have been pulled in one way, keep moving, and go out the other way, Houston's falling, but I believe it's, I'm certain it's sold out, they're working on selling out these tickets. They're expecting more requests for toys this year than ever before, and every year goes up, but it's because of obviously COVID-related point issues, et cetera, so he always goes around and starts asking for donations and collections, so maybe they could sit with contact, did you go in? It's very large.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else have any comments on seven and eight? Number nine is advisory, our city clerk indicates that all those items, 90 days, that have been tabled 90 days are null and void. Any comments on that? One referred to was the sewer lateral replacement ordinance, March 2nd of this year. Any comments?
I don't care about that.
Right. All right, communication from citizens, item number 10, regarding the agricultural district annual. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I missed an item. DPW Commissioner DeSantis requests city council approval for municipal agreements for the town of Hamburg as part of waiver of the rules to pave Willow Grove. It'll be a shared cost project with the town of Hamburg taking the lead on that. Anyone have any issues on that or questions?
To be correct, there are so many, there are so many roads, we're talking about the one on South Park.
Correct. Anyone, any other questions?
No, I'd just like to say that, you know, we've been working on that for the last three years, on or off, we were waiting for the solar panel work to be done at Willow Grove, and I'm glad to see that. We've talked to the supervisor, Shai, we've talked to Matt, our installation, his, his Tony took the rain, got it done, and we really appreciate it, and people on Willow Grove will really appreciate it, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Serratt. Director Laxo had to leave prior engagement, so communications from citizens, again, number 10, Sarah Gotti, regarding agricultural district annual enrollment period, brought any of those interested, any comments on that?
No, but speaking of agriculture, I believe the Hetchy Band showed up tomorrow.
At one location.
Our friend as well.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Item 11, Marie Edwards, we also have Jamie Lawrence, present, I believe both are going to address the council briefly. Any questions on 11? Moving to number 12, John Anderson, you heard from Councilman Ingram that he sent communications as well as photographs regarding the parking issues on Ridge Road and North Stillawana Avenue. Any comments on that?
Let me go mic number 11, I'm sorry, I have a question at the time I do now, Maria?
Under.
Okay. How, should we have seen, how long is the agreement for?
The agreement's kind of, are you talking to him?
Yeah.
Are all of them, like, want, I mean, forever? It's something that's, it's not.
We'll get into that a little more detail with Jamie also, and just so the council understands, there has to be new legislation, both modifying the existing ordinances, as well as passing new legislation, so that'll be a project that Mr. Judah, our city attorney, is aware of that, and has been working with Peter Reese, the attorney for the other thing. Item number 13, Amira Muhwahi is present, wants to address the council. Many comments on that issue? Item 14 and 15 are new business registrations. Any comments at either one of those? With that being said, it's approximately 20 minutes after seven, we will formally call the September 8th, 2020 Lackawanna City Council Meeting to Order. City Clerk, you call the roll. I just reminded, this meeting is being recorded, we'll call council, Ingram.
Here.
Samansky, here. Ready?
Here.
Sterling?
Here.
Marano?
Here.
Department head's law.
Here.
Development.
Here.
Public Works has been excused, Public Safety has been excused, Controller?
Here.
Recreation was here, but they were excused during the caucus. Hearings from citizens, can we get someone, Dave, bring up that sheet that people have been signing in? Thank you. Sir? Thank you, Officer Joyce. Can't, not good at reading a lot of handwriting, but I believe this is Zanwar Al Kalayi, 148 Hallam Avenue, wants to address the city council. Would you want to come forward? Anybody that speaks, like, please come up to this little table I set up, and you may, because of the distance and where the table's at, if you feel more comfortable, you can remove your mask while speaking, obviously put it back down, and you can go to sit.
I'm Wal Kalayi, 148 Hallam Avenue, Lackawanna. I have a couple items that I want to talk about, part of them, and I jumped out, and one item is outside of my agenda, mine. The item that I jumped out, one item that was brought up, there's white paint. It's really, I think, needs to, it's good, it's a good idea, but I think the way it's designed, it's taking way too much space for the street, the turns, it's making it very difficult right up in that area, and it's really making it very difficult, also for, almost eliminates parking in one side of the street, so it's making it very difficult for businesses and people in that area to move anywhere. I mean, as of now, when they park in there, open the door, people coming through, they actually have to avoid, you know, the, from hitting the cars. Very narrow, very, the design, I think, needs to be reconsidered, how it's, how it's.
Can I address that for you right now? This is just a temporary, it's more of an experimental design, trying to see where the positive aspects are, where the negative aspects are, and what you pointed out is we're aware of, I'm sure Director Development is, hopefully, the ultimate design will change where it's necessary, but it's done with the attempt to bring more people to the city, and hopefully improve businesses, so overall, it's going to take some growing pains, but we're aware, and we thank you for your observations.
Even to me, in the middle of school, as of now, I'd never go, when the bus is there, when we return to home business, there will be no known for.
We're aware of that, we're aware of the situation in front of the old Lackawanna Hotel for emergency vehicles there to himself. Thank you. Your second item?
Second item, which is regarding, where did it go, worth for the, any item over 90, table over 90 to be null and void, I don't remember what item was on the agenda here, but will the person who submitted that request or had the item on the agenda table will be notified, or will the council just make it null and void, or notify the person who requested, the council, whether it's that matter? Because sometimes it gets tabled.
It's not a guy who's under our rules, but they have the right to put it back on the agenda. We try to, we try to, we try to put on the agenda items on the table, correct? In fact, our city clerk has created a system whereby, hopefully, tabled items won't be, won't fall through the cracks very easily anymore. He's taken a lot of time in developing that system, so hopefully we'll be more aware of those items coming up in the future. In fact, we'll hear from Mr. Dupus while it's on. I hear your question, sir, 95% of the items on our table were introduced to the council agenda by a department head generally, so items on our table, and they go beyond 90 days, department head is notified, that it's, because he's at the meeting, that it's been tabled, it's gone over 90 days, so it's considered null and void. If a private citizen, if it was a communication from them, then yes, that's considered a certification of action taken, and a notice would go out to that person stating that your table, your item was tabled in excess of 90 days, and was received and filed by the council, is now considered null and void, so it will be a possible.
Okay, anyone, they will be notified after the 90 days, it's not, because sometimes, and this happened to us in the past, where you put out a request, they don't have enough time to discuss it, or what happens, they tell them for the next meeting, but it never gets added, then, you know, the 90 days go past, and who's called, now, is it the council or the individual not following up with it? It's just a thing that happens, and that means it's null and void, because it happened in the past where items get added to the agenda, they get tabled for further discussions, they never make it back to the agenda, and now, after 90 days, all they're going to receive is just a notification that they have to, you know, pass 90 days, and it's null and void, and they have to start the process all over again. And there is a mechanism where, I'll say, after 30 days, I mean, after that, 25 days, or something, a notification goes to the person who submitted the request, to notify them if they're not presenting whatever material the council needs.
The notification goes out after 60 days, saying again, this item is tabled for 60 days, remains tabled for an additional 30, and be considered null and void.
Okay, that's, that's, that's right. And I don't know if there's much to tell about the businesses here, we just need to make sure, especially, I know, for example, the location of the bar here on 2347, South Park, we need just to make sure that we have just a parking issue that we're having in that area, because I know with businesses, always parking becomes an issue afterwards, so we need to address it before it happens. That's, that's regarding the items on. I have it. Item that's on the agenda, which is speaking in behalf of the Arab and Muslim community of Lackawanna, I'm the president of the Arab and Muslim community of Lackawanna, and I would like to express our disappointment and frustration, the members of the council, from the Arab and Muslim community, regarding the decision of the council to nominate Mr. Samansky to the council, knowing very well Mr. Samansky's history, a discriminatory against the Arab and Muslim community, Mr. Samansky's past and recent actions are nothing useful, and for the council to appoint him back to the council, representing the very authority, whom he has losing his position of authority, to marginalize and discriminate against his counsel, I think something.
I, I thank you for that, but we don't entertain any personal attacks against this council. If there are appropriate, no, listen to me, there are appropriate forms for that, but let me just tell you what this council went through. Three of the members of the council had interviews. We advertised for applications, and the advertisement indicated what the process would be to apply. Send in a resume, send it in before a certain date, send it in certified mail, you have to be a member of the, you have to be a resident of the second ward, and you have to be of the same party as the person who vacated. Only one person of the four that we asked for interviews complied with all those requirements. That was Mr. Samansky. Now, technically, if we were going to go by those requirements, we would have had one interview, we decided not to do that, we invited other people, three other people, who expressed an interest but didn't comply with the requirements, to come in for interviews, too, and two of the three did show up, and after interviewing the three candidates who showed for the interviews, based on what we're facing with the tax situation, unified tax rate, COVID, lack of funding from sales tax, Mr. Samansky was overly qualified for the position, and if there are personal items in Mr. Samansky's background, this is not an appropriate form for doing that.
And I, this is, I understand that I expected that, and that's not appropriate, not that I don't know, but what happened, I was speaking as a resident, as a representative of the citizens of the community of Lackawanna, that to appoint someone that, because that's a responsible thing to go, not to take personal benefit of it, or what happened, this is a decision that the council made, choosing an individual with their background, obviously, you know, and he made a great player, and I don't think, I don't think, yeah, I don't think the council president, that's something that was absolutely not acceptable. You got, you know, maybe he's qualified, I can represent Lackawanna, again, this is a comparison, I don't know, Mr. Samansky, you know, they did a show, you know, who had great company, but that doesn't mean that they're qualified, or that means they could be the silk, I mean, it's all looking at the individual, or all their specific skills, you look for them, that, that, that they've done, is it in the right directions, is it to bring up the community, or is it what they can be even further, and, you know, play one thing, one group against others, so this is a responsible, that the council should review, not just this position, in future positions, it is absolutely, in the situation, what's, you know, how this individual will feel about the community, and it doesn't matter what position it is, opposite position, community, I mean, if the community is a guy, the council, what's, or what happened, needs to be looked at, where that is their stand, in accordance to dealing with minority, in the community, and working with the community together, that is something that should be, should have been considered, not to down. We express our frustration and disappointment with the council for choosing. We express our frustration and disappointment with the council for choosing Mr. Semansky to that position.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I make a statement?
Sure.
I just want to say something. I'm sixty-two years old, I grew up in the city. I started out as a young assistant city attorney back in nineteen, mid-eighties, when Tom Raddish was mayor. I knew former mayor Kathy Stanishevsky, the first woman mayor in our city. I know Guy Kuett was a mayor here at one time, John Kurriak. I also served as city attorney when Norm Polanski was mayor, and I served as city attorney partially to Jeff Semansky's term, and I'm now serving as city attorney through that I follow's term. One thing I could tell you, and this, everybody here, Mayor Semansky, in my opinion, has been the most diverse and most understanding mayor the city has ever had. Okay, if you look at our police department, if you look at our fire department, and if you look at our Department of Public Works, he's appointed minorities, he's appointed Iranians, he's appointed blacks, he's appointed females. In my opinion, in terms of being an equal opportunity employer in the city, he's gone above and beyond what's required. I think it's wrong to come up here at a public meeting, dealing with city issues, and personally attack the council for hiring someone that's well qualified and who served the city the way he has. If you've got a problem with him, over him being the committee man and challenging petitions or something like that, this isn't the appropriate forum for it, and I think it's totally wrong to slander someone who's, who's got nothing but the city of Lackawanna as his, as his number-one priority, and he's, and I'll continue to back Jeff Semansky in any decision he makes. Has he made mistakes? I'm sure he has. Has our current mayor made mistakes? I'm sure she has. But I think we all learn from our mistakes, and I think, you know, now that he's on the council, he's one of five, I think you have to put that behind you, and I think you have to work with him. If he's done anything wrong, I'm sure it wasn't intentional, but like I said, in terms of dealing with the public, and a year and a half, or two years of I spent with him, I had no problem with him being prejudiced or biased in anything, so I respectfully disagree with you, that's all.
Okay. We're going to move on.
Thank you for standing for my time.
Thank you. Next is Reverend Mark Lou.
Good evening, Mr. Lou. I'm the pastor of Second Baptist Church, eighteen church group. I rose to just comment on the bike path, ask you a couple of questions. Was there a traffic survey done? And did the city even talk to the NFTA regarding buses? Because I do, I do realize that as traffic increase, as school increase, it's going to be a heavy traffic problem in that area, not just with the businesses and turn of the trucks, but has that been done? A traffic survey, and also, was NFTA part of the decision in making that bike path the way it is and where it is?
To answer your question, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but yes, there was a traffic study done. The recommendation, in fact, we, we had asked the traffic study be done with the intent of hoping to put a traffic light in the first ward on Ridge Road in that particular area, but the report came back as saying, was it necessary, given the volume of traffic? However, what they do recommend, in order to facilitate traffic and control traffic more effectively and efficiently, is what they call the traffic diet, and that traffic diet is within the parameters of what the bike path fits, but again, as I said earlier, it's, it's a, it's an experiment. So I don't know if NFTA was spoken to specifically, perhaps our Director Stan would know, but yes, there was a traffic study done. Director, anything?
Yeah, no, there absolutely was a traffic study done, this was part of the recommended road diet. One of the goals was to reduce the crossing distance from forty-six feet to twenty-two feet of lanes of traffic on this to make it safer for people. With regards to the dimensions of the road, they're all consistent with New York State guidelines. One of the things we have to do is to get people to slow down if we don't want to get people squished. That was the recommendation of that. It's Ridge Road, it's actually a city, yeah, Ridge Road is a city road, traffic stops, there's been nothing which has triggered NFTA involvement as far as that. There's been some pull over lanes for that. There's going to be some further modification to it. There's some other modifications that can be done later, but there was, those are the answers to your question.
Second, third point. Second Baptist Church, we're part of a COVID response team, so our church is calling residents of Lackawanna, checking on their overall health and welfare. There is also some mandates to, if you are, have shut off notices to your deals, there's an opportunity for those to be rectified. Also, if you need food, there's an opportunity for individuals to give food, whether it went to their house or other places, that is proposed, making announcement, thank you.
Thank you.
This is the next question. Understand that this is an experiment, trying something new, different, worst time is always the worst time. The design may not work out right now, winter is coming.
Winter is coming, so I'm sure if you want to, anyway, we get to change the plan if it doesn't work out.
All threats, I mean, it's, all the bicycles, but maybe not, so, not just speaking, like this, I think it's refreshing, it's different, there has been a lot of, and the council will do research, we can come back and work, we can do it, but we have to figure out what works and what doesn't work.
Thank you. Next is Marie Edwards and Jamie Lawrence, from Feral Cats Alliance in Ten Life Club.
Yes, I'm actually doing Ten Life Club, and Jamie's going to talk about TNR, but leave your way, but TNR is utilized through our clinic at Ten Life Club in Placedale. Jamie will go explain, explain a little bit more about TNR.
Good evening, thank you for joining us a few minutes tonight. One thing I realized, I have a rat problem in Lackawanna. I'm here to introduce the cat problem that has existed for many years, by the TNR, which is trapping the vaccinated and turned. Your law does not allow for that procedure to take place for communities of stray or feral cats. As you may remember, how many people have been taken, declined, showed up in court through years. I hope that we're here tonight to turn the page, starting a chapter for the animals in this area. I've been working with Fred, and Pete Reese, and various other individuals in the area. Operation Cats is located here in Placedale, and we actually have been conducting the clinics for various trapping situations that have been transpiring here in Lackawanna, unveiling a heat from eighty-eight to eighty-nine-year-old husband wanting to have a overpopulation of cats. At least, we've been told about a woman in the first ward that received a warning, that she would be fined two hundred and fifty dollars for feeding her cats. There was TNR taking place there, that has since stopped. The only way to rectify this problem of cats, we come to, to everybody, the constituents, the owners, people in the animal community, is to enact TNR between trapped cat, vaccinated, treated for fleas, animal spay and neuter, and return it to the community. This is the only way to get proclamation now, otherwise, they're just long supply and that has happened, has been happening for many, many years here, and those humans have not been affected. So again, I appreciate your time and looking forward to what we can do in the future.
Thank you, Jamie.
For rolling control, so that's big.
Record control.
Anyone have any questions, Jamie or?
How do they feed the cat?
I'm sorry?
How do they feed the cat?
Well, there are feeding protocols that are established, inside of the pamphlet that I'm handing out, there's something from Alien Cat Alax, which is a national organization and the feeding organizations, will be happy to work with anybody about the feeding, certain times.
Are they kicking the rats out of the cat?
Well, most of the time, like, I have a trapped cat colony locally, and they're fed only morning, food is gone by nighttime, so there's nothing, so if we can get the people that are feeding, and work with them, which we know a lot of them, and have them pick that food up, that can alleviate the raccoons, the rats.
I got four, I got four on my street.
Do you? I'll be happy to come by and trap them if they've been passed.
No, somebody's probably bitter. We don't do neutering.
Alice, Kevin, you do neutering here.
Listen, you can ask him, and we'll be right back. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. George Halsey.
George Halsey, one sixty-five still on Avenue. My, my response is, is one sixty-one still on Avenue. I live next door, right next door to the facility, to the business, and it was, it was commended, it was, it was only one complaint. Now, we don't want to complain, we don't want to call every day, we don't. Now, nobody on this council, nobody in the department, would like to have drug sales going on at your house, in front of your house, every single day. It stopped for about two months, it started back up about three weeks ago.
Yeah. Is that the biggest problem?
That is the big problem. No, no, that's not the big problem. That is a problem. The big problem is the rats. I lived there for twenty, twenty-one years, with three owners of business, we never, ever, ever, ever had rats.
No.
And I'm talking about, I know what a mice is. The rat was found dead floating in my pond trying to get my fish. There was one on the sidewalk, just as we can have it go this big.
How do you know the rats are related to the store?
You go to the store, because you call the health department, the health department sighted them and saw the infestation area where they were leaving food out in the back of the store, and that created a problem. So that, that, that's a problem. Nobody, nobody should have to deal with that. And then, the drug sales is just ridiculous, just totally ridiculous. They don't stand outside, they're going to sit in, sit in front of the car. Now, I can call you every day, day, all day, we don't want to do that. All we want is a problem resolved, and as a taxpayer, that's what I expect. I, I, I don't want to have to come to the council, we send a letter, a letter to facilitate, a letter spelled out, what the problems are, I have the elevator deck, I see the sales in the backyard, I smell it, and the smoke in front of the store, it's just totally disrespectful, there's no need for that.
George, first. Four, four councilmen are doing this for right now, so, four, first, what councilman just helped you? What you said, for two months, it stopped. What, what changed? What changed during that time?
This is after the initial letter that sent to the council, and it was addressed initially, and they got ready to, because before I went to the council, I distributed the letter to everybody in the neighborhood, let them know the absentee taking, and some of the neighbors, let them know, so they, they found out, so they couldn't know they had it. They stopped the guys who were standing up crying, but now, they started that.
Well, I will say, I'm enjoying, I'm watching my outside, and I have a resident who was suspected in their house, so, I'm quietly, quietly grateful, but we really commend, commend, we're, 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 but we do appreciate people coming forward with respect, and having all these things, look closer.
Can I, can I address this a little bit too? I walk it every day. I see what George does, I remember when, when I got the call, I get the call, you know what I'm saying? We have the booklet here, where, when people make complaints, and we see it in some of them, like, it's, it's ridiculous. The only reason they stopped, because it wasn't a little more, police were sitting there a little more than what they normally do. And when they slack off a little bit, they go back to what, what they normally do. It's not just happening around the store, it's happening around other areas of the store, other areas. I live in Gates, it's happening the same thing, it's, it's the same thing that'd be happening, you know? And we understand that we can't do, tell everybody what, we can't tell what's going on, but the people that live there, nine times ten, we got George and a couple people that speak up, nine times ten, people don't speak up because they feel retaliation, and it has happened, but we have to, we have to submit about this store.
Through the minutes of the regular meeting of August seventeenth, twenty twenty.
Right, almost, the minutes of August seventeenth, twenty twenty, meeting has been.
Motion by, I don't know, second by, to go down, minutes of August seventeenth, twenty twenty, meeting is ready, Kingham.
Yes.
Already, sir, like.
Yes.
Yes. Three, five, zero. Apartmental reports, one through three.
All right, almost, receiving file, departmental reports, one through three, including.
Already set. Motion by Morano, second by Moradi, to receive file, departmental reports, one through three, Ingram.
Yes.
Semansky.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Sir, like.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Three, five, zero.
Morano, I moved away the rules pursuant to where I filed a request, council approval, as a force act, together with DPW Commission request, move the resurfacing, resurfacing agreement with the town of Amber.
Second. Motion by Morano, second by, sir, like, to waive the rules. Ingram.
Yes.
Semansky.
Yes.
Already.
Yes.
Sir, like.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Item number five was previously withdrawn earlier this meeting, and moves this to item number six, communications from department division head, city attorney. A cash fee review is proposed local law and municipal agreement regarding energy improvement corporation, who have provided a copy of this proposed local law in excess of the seven-day requirement as per Minister Home Rule Law, section twenty, sub four. This program provides financing to commercial and nonprofit building owners to make energy upgrades to their buildings. This agreement will not cost the city any funds, but will enable property owners benefit from another source of financing for energy improvements. On behalf of the Department of Development, I request city council to schedule a date for a public hearing regarding this proposed local law, full version of that local law and the associated municipal agreements that are filed in the clerk's office. So you'll need to put something on the calendar.
Ricky, were you focusing on a certain date?
No. I mean, is there deadline?
No, we're going to have another meeting in two weeks, but if we decide at the beginning of the next meeting, for our hearing date, that would work.
That works.
I think it's got to be attending.
Four o'clock.
Well, I don't know.
Well, there has to be hearing, and there has to be five days.
Yes, we need, they need ten days, the next, the next council meeting's fourteen days.
Yeah, actually, it's the twenty-eighth, right?
Right.
So do it at six-thirty?
Yeah, six-thirty.
If anyone's got any questions.
Six-thirty on the twenty-eighth, which is the next council meeting?
Yes. So Morano moves to receive and file, schedule a public hearing to be held on September twenty-eighth at six-thirty at this location.
Second. So we have a motion by Morano, second by Semansky, receiving files, scheduled public hearing to be held September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-six, thirty P M, senior center. Ingram.
Yes.
Semansky.
Yes.
Already.
Yes.
Sir, like.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Item number seven, director of recreation and DPW Commission, request city council authorize the use of the KFC property, twenty-eight thirty-eight South Park Avenue, by the Lackawanna DPW, for a charity chicken, uh, chicken dinner on Saturday, October third, twenty-twenty, from three to seven P M. This will be a drive-through event with proceeds benefiting the Lackawanna DPW toy drive, with food services provided by Wheatner Barbecue, insurance documents are attached.
I request a move of further service to the city attorney.
Second.
Motion by Semansky, second by Morano, to approve request for the city attorney Ingram.
Yes.
Semansky.
Yes.
Already.
Yes.
Sir, like.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Item number eight, director of recreation, request the city council authorize the use of Veteran Stadium, twenty-nine sixty.